Good afternoon. This afternoon, we have a work session on several policies and an update on our sales SRTAC. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Velkert?
Present.
Ms. McRico?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge lead.
Pledge leaders? To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have board policies 2371, Hope Scholarship, 5350, Student Suicide, 8390, Animals on District Property, 8400, Environmental Health and Safety Issues, and 9160, Public Attendance. Looks like all of those belong to Student Services, so I will now turn it over to Chris Moore, Assistant Superintendent.
Hey, thank you, guys. We have Patricia Fontana with us today and Dana Jenkins, both Directors for Student Services. As we work through the policies and have any questions, they're available to help. 2371, Hope Scholarship. This policy is being developed in compliance with applicable Florida law. This policy provides that students in public schools are eligible to apply for a Hope Scholarship if they are subject to an incident as that term is defined in Florida statute. The policy outlines provisions related to eligibility, required investigations, parental notification, statewide assessments, and the terms of a Hope Scholarship. This new policy outlines that students are eligible for a Hope Scholarship if it is established that the student was subjected to and subsequently reported an incident. These proposed revisions, they're not revisions, this proposed new policy encompasses the suggested language of NEOLAW.
Anyone have any questions on the Hope Scholarship policy?
I have a, I'll ask a quick question, kind of related, but while Katie's finding hers. We are incorporating statutory language by utilizing the term "subjected to," right?
Correct.
And I ask that kind of as a, like, I already know the answer to it, but I feel like it's important for the public who may be paying attention to know that. That "subjected to" and reports to a principal could mean a whole lot of things. The other piece in that policy that I'm pretty sure is coming from statute, and that is or at any other school, so the point with the Hope Scholarship, and I understand it and I support that we want to keep kids from a bullying environment, but in the statutory language, I'm not sure that they necessarily achieve that, primarily because we are basically saying, if my daughter's walking down the hall and she sees two students get in a fight, and maybe it's not even at her school, maybe she's visiting the middle school to shadow another student today, and she sees two kids get in a fight, and she reports it to the principal, she's eligible for a Hope Scholarship.
I think it really defines out the eligibility, and you are correct, "subjected to" is left open. With the Hope Scholarship application, it details a little bit more about what has to be in place for the Hope Scholarship to be granted. And we get many more applications than are granted based on that eligibility requirement.
Okay. Could you share that application? I think we have, was it part of the, it wasn't part of the policy, was it?
I don't think it's attached to this, no, but we can.
Can I? You don't have to, you have it, if you want to.
And the form that was created was required from the Florida Department of Education, so we have to use this form, we can't deviate from the form. I'm trying to figure out what's the easiest way to find it.
Yeah, there were some districts that tried to add clarifying language to the DOE form, and their hands were slapped pretty quickly. So, we don't.
And I'll be honest, I was one of them. What I'm trying to do on the form is see if I can log in. And this is our internal website where the, has all the documents for the investigation process.
I know we have a tight agenda, it might be something we have to get to.
And that's my phone, yes.
Do you want to go ahead and ask them while they're looking for?
So, and E talks about statewide assessments. Just was curious, do those, does that mean that if they have a Hope Scholarship, even if they go to a private school, they're still are going to be taking the FSA and?
They can, there's a choice. So, it's a letter that we're currently sending out to all our private schools in the district who have McKay scholarships, Hope Scholarship students, and the private schools sends that information to the parents that they would like, they don't have to, but if they would like to participate in a statewide assessment, there's a process that explains it in the letter.
So, there's an opt-in that they have to take. And then, if they take those assessments, do they count back to their home school, or is it just?
No, it doesn't come to ours.
So, does that, okay. And then, and F talked about the eligibility remaining in force, does that mean even if they start in kindergarten, then they're eligible to keep the Hope Scholarship all the way up through 12th grade?
Okay. And if it's a public school, through the end of that grade level, that's cool. So, they got it in kindergarten, they were at one school, School A, and they went to School B, they keep, stay there through the end of sixth grade. When they get to middle school, they kind of have to reapply.
Okay, so it doesn't go from kindergarten to 12th, it goes?
Well, the school level changes, so they have to choose, tell what school they're going to go to.
Okay, gotcha.
And that's kind of public McKay scholarship, is the very same, pretty much exactly the same as the McKay Scholarship public. So, this is the form from the DOE, and this is the form that we're required, we cannot alter this form, because if you, this is the same form that if they get it and they choose to go to a private school, they have to scan and email the original form to the website, to the tax scholarship website, for them to process it. So, we, and the reason I learned, I did, I was one of the school districts that edited.
I wasn't going to sell her out.
Because at the bottom of the form, voice says to transfer your student to another public school, please contact your school district office. I actually put our link and our information in there, because it doesn't tell them who to call. It just says district office. So, I wanted to be more specific, so I actually put our information on there, and then a parent submitted to the state, and they immediately called me and said, you can't have them, you have to take it off, you have to use this form, you can't edit it, you can't make any changes to it.
Wow.
And still, even on the form, there's no?
Shame on you for trying to be more helpful.
Yeah, right. I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you, very much. Any additional questions on the policy from anyone? All right, back to you.
8350, Student Suicide. This policy is being revised to clarify procedures for ensuring all staff have access to suicide prevention resources through professional development and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following: title change to student suicide awareness and prevention, and in-service requirements for schools to become a suicide prevention certified school. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOLAW.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on policy 5350?
Just a really quick one on E. I'm reading.
Yes.
The SRI. We've had, leading to Baker Act, we've had conversations about this before, about who does them, and it seems pretty clear, but nowhere in there does say anything about our S, no, actually, this whole policy about our SROs being involved. So, I know, they can Baker Act separately, right?
Well, we don't Baker Act, we do the SRI process, and then we kind of, but we, it seems like we've had some problems, especially in the undergrades this year with increased number of these, of the Baker Act, and we've had some conversation about, you know, increased presence of law enforcement, which may be, may be been correlated to an increase in that. So, is that, is this a change from what we've done before at all? It is not. That language was added because the, there was legislation written that specified that you have to use certain instruments for your SRI process. We were already using those instruments, but when they went in to add the certified, suicide certified prevention schools, they said you can't, you can't even be a certified prevention school if you don't do certain things in your policy, including, say, you're going to use the DOE SRI-approved instrument, which we already do. One of them is the Columbia, and we use that as a second tier to our process.
The only other thing I would just add is just to complement this, and I know some of this may have come straight out of the statute, but this policy is much clearer, much more specific than the current, so I think that's.
It's Dana and her team.
Yay.
Any additional comments, questions, or concerns on policy 5350, Student Suicide Prevention? Okay, back to you, Chris.
All right, 8390, Animals on District Property, a policy two years in the making, I believe. This is a proposed new policy to address service animals on district property for students, employees, parent legal guardians, vendors, visitors, others, and other changes in compliance with applicable state and Florida law. There are currently a number of policies that mention animals on district property. The passage of this proposed new policy is in compliance with House Bill 71 in order to comply with Florida statute. The proposed new policy includes a definition of service animal, clarifies vaccination, licensing, vet requirements, eligibility for transportation of service animals, removing and/or excluding service animals and non-service animals on district policy. New proposed administrative procedures for 8390, Animals on District Property, will be presented for approval related to this policy. The proposed new policy reflects the requirements set forth in current state and Florida law.
Questions, comments, concerns on the?
I just have a comment. I just want to really appreciate that you did not use NEOLAW's, any living dog creature. I'm not using that.
Horrible.
I knew you said that. Remember, I said it was two years in the making?
That came from two years ago, we fed that.
Thank you.
I can imagine that completely, where it came from. Go back.
I'm thinking, unbelievable that that was in there, so.
I just have one, one quick question on this. We identify in the policy that emotional support animals are not considered service animals.
Correct.
Does that mean that we're not allowed to have an emotional support animal for the district?
Well, so it's two different, so that's animals on, well, that's more of animals on district property.
Yeah.
So, the way service animals is you should relate it to a person.
Yes.
So, if I'm working with a student, that service animal has to perform a task, not just an emotional. So, for, yes, for that student, I would be denying that request. Now, what I think you're saying is, can we have one for the classroom, like an emotional?
Yeah, or, or can, yeah, can we have a dog as part of our crisis team that goes out to schools in response to crises?
That would be, follow the procedure of animals on, like, the specific animals on school property, has not a service animal.
I'd like a schoolwork dog.
Yeah, like, yeah, whatever you want. And there's procedures inherent how to do that, how to, we have, the principal has to.
Where does that come in?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't eliminating that option.
No, it's, let me look at.
Non-service animals in schools and elsewhere, it's under D.
Yeah.
Under D?
Yeah. So, that's still in there, but we just want, what happened, if you even look at the other policies, service animals was under ESC.
Right.
Service animals are not in ESC, this is Section 504. So, we took it, and then we had animals on district property on their facilities, and we just took everything, put it on one policy, to make sure employees, people who want to go into public events, we have one policy that has everything, and not trying to figure out where it was located. So, that's why we kind of pulled it all together. Thank you.
Okay. So, do we? Do we do emotional support?
We have been.
I mean, we could have peacocks, we could have pigs.
We do not give, for students, no.
For students, no. We should. We've got rabbits, and all kinds of stuff, and teachers.
Yeah, teachers' classrooms.
And non-service animals.
Okay.
Non-service animals.
I just wanted to.
What's your service animals, right?
But is that a miniature?
It's a dog or miniature horse.
It's a ride, we can take kids on rides.
No.
That's true.
No. It has to be approved by the principal, and have to show. And it has to, it has to perform a job.
Why is that?
Why? We do actually have horse therapy programs.
No, 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 no.
But I think it'd be the kid.
So, you would think.
We used to have a rabbit in my son's school, in one of the classrooms. Everybody loved that rabbit, year after year after year. Then the principal vanished, the rabbit. How can one have a task?
That's, okay, that's got to show the animal, that would, that would follow under D.
Non-service animal, correct.
That doesn't have to.
Is that rabbit allowed to come back? I don't want to.
If they follow this, I would say, yes.
It has to have a job, it doesn't have any purpose, it can just be there. I would refer. It has to support specific curriculum. Yeah, that's on top.
Yes, it's on here.
Right. And I would refer the principal to this policy, to ensure that they were compliant with this policy in their decision-making.
I'm going to go fast, open the hand alarms, sorry.
I would refer the principal to this policy and make sure they're making decisions in relation to this policy. Glad the camera's.
As long as it's supporting the dog.
I do have.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Yes. My concern is policy, and maybe it's inherent, I read through it, I missed it, but, you know, there's, it's very easy for people to get their dogs qualified as service animals in the days.
Not officially.
I think, emotional support.
Right.
I think it's easy for emotional support.
But is there documentation, does it have to be in an IP or a 504, or some kind of health card?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Procedures. Yes. So, let's say, we have a lot of students who have requested to bring a service animal. Currently, they were not identified as a Section 504 student with an accommodation plan or a student with a disability. So, we are only required to ask two questions, and once we answer those questions, I can't ask for certification. Now, if they're not either one, I reconvene a team to consider, maybe you should have a 504 accommodation plan if you're requesting, and it doesn't have to be tied to either one.
Okay. But, so, so I guess what I'm asking is, what about our policy is going to keep that from happening, for everybody who wants a comfort dog to bring their body, pay them a card that said they need to have a stop with them?
So, there's a team that meets together, and the parent fills out an application, it goes through the principal, it goes through me, we look at what tasks, we can only look at what tasks they're performing. There is some meeting that we also have, that's part of, be part of the administrative procedures, to talk about how that's going to work in the school, and then there's procedures. We have had approved some service animals that we questioned the task, but we couldn't really question them until we went through the process, and once they start coming to school, we could say, you're not meeting these criteria, your animal's not, and then we stop them from coming. But without, we can't get into asking too much.
Right.
Yeah, we're allowed two questions.
Yes, and that's it.
And it is, is the animal required for a disability, and what is the worker task that they do? And like Patricia was saying, it doesn't necessarily relate to a 504 or IP, but once you start talking about, is the animal required for a disability, it generates a different conversation about what's.
But some may be health-related, which wouldn't necessarily.
Could relate, but I would, I would question whether we have a 504.
Or accommodation.
If we had enough to open a 504, had to add accommodations because of that.
And this is getting into the specifics, but, I mean, part of the training, I mean, are we going to have to, like, allow the kids to take their dogs to the, you know, high breaks? I mean, this, it just, it kind of opens a can of worms.
Oh, so weren't the cans already open? This isn't new. We've been allowing the service dogs on our campuses for quite a while, and I will tell you that part of the process that, because I was a principal, the first time I interacted with this and with Patricia's group, is that they come in and they work through a plan. You know, how is, what is the best route for you and the dog to take when you're changing classrooms? What is the acceptable time for you to go and have your dog use the restroom, bathroom, whatever, and for you to clean up after it? And so, it's all part of the plan that they work through before the student even starts in the school with the service animal.
And we also do training to the students and the staff at the school, so they know this is not a dog, we go ahead, so we work through that process. So, each one that we've had, we've developed a plan individualized to that school, those needs. Sometimes we involve facilities, because waste, where do we put it, and we need to get an extra, where this all, so we have problems solved through that. The truly people who actually have a service animal go through this process, and I haven't had issues. It's the ones that we question, once they start the process, some of them will say, okay, this is way.
Way more.
Way more. And some students will bring the dog for a couple of days, and they'll feel like this is too much work, and also the cat, the cat is no longer there. So, truly, the people who need that service animal are the ones who go through the process and actually do. And the ones, you've had one, I mean, it's really bad, it impacted schools.
Yeah, it was, it didn't impact the schools, but it was a situation where three weeks later, it was like, too much. Because it is, it's quite a lot to, to deal with having a service dog with you, and you having total ownership of that dog.
Do you have a estimate about how many? Not much.
We, it's under five.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does this allow for service goats? I don't think it's allowed a dog. No, I don't mean, I don't mean like goats, I mean, is this allowed, because it's talking about on our campus, the non-service animals say only if it supports curriculum, which our goats do not support curriculum.
Oh, but Sue's going to tell you that they did support curriculum because they were providing better facilities.
I'm just saying, I want to make sure we're not excluding future goat usage in the future.
I think that was a separate contract. I mean, I'll certainly have to work through that, I hadn't considered that, but I would say that was a separate contract.
I think Mr. Gibbs could probably give us a good evaluation.
Yeah.
If we have good facilities, then it supports the curriculum.
You got to have, you got to maintain your facilities, so as long as it's maintaining your facility.
See?
You can argue that.
Right.
That's what we heard.
You can support our goat.
Good answer, Mr. Gibbs.
We did not ask that question in the interview, do you support the goat usage?
I wouldn't have been able to answer it.
Any additional comments, questions, or concerns on policy 8390, Animals on District Property? Moving along, Ms. Moore.
8400, Environmental Health and Safety Issues. This policy is being revised to remove this section related to animals on district property and other changes in compliance with applicable state and federal law. Again, we just moved it into the form, the policy we're just talking about. Particular areas of revision include the following: the deletion of Animals on District Property section. The Animals on District Property section will be included in a new proposed board policy, 8390. The new proposed policy will address animals permitted on district property. Administrative procedures, 8400B, student use of service animals will be repealed and re-adopted as administrative procedures in 8390, Animals on District Property Procedures. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language of NEOLAW.
Questions, comments, concerns on 8400, Environmental Health and Safety?
Nope.
You good?
Yep.
All right, back to you, Ms. Moore.
9160, Public Attendance at School Events. This policy is being revised to clarify language concerning the accessibility of district facilities to individuals with disabilities at school events and other changes in compliance with applicable state and federal law. In addition, this policy will include clarifying language for individuals with disabilities to be accompanied by service animals. These proposed revisions encompass the suggested language of NEOLAW.
Questions, comments, concerns on 9160, Public Attendance?
You found my typo. You fixed it already.
Well, Miss, you found the typo. And there were two.
Ah, so you should do some work on that. All right, activated chants.
Yes, and then there was administrative, started administrator, and the last.
Y'all are good.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns regarding policy 9160, Public Attendance? Thank you, Dr. Fontana and Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
For your work on these policies. Now, I will turn it over to Stu Hahn, Assistant Superintendent of Facility Services for our sales SRTAC portion of workshop.
Thank you. If you could give me just a moment to adjust the balance?
Definitely not, so.
Can I just say that I look forward to this presentation after flipping through the PowerPoint? You saw all the jokes.
It does look like a good presentation.
It does.
Last time I had a joke in my presentation, we ended up with goats, so. The big debate in our office is, what's on your slide this time?
I love it. I wasn't sure to be entertained or concerned.
So, good afternoon, everyone, and I want to start my presentation by asking you, do you all know what all of these schools have in common?
Maybe one in the right corner. It's, Neolaic is old.
Well, mine was old, too.
All 50 this year?
They are all older than I am. So, there's something to be said for aging gracefully, and that's kind of where we are in our facilities at Bravard Public Schools. So, I'm going to talk through a little bit about where we are with our facilities, what we're doing in assessments, eventually leading to a conversation about the SRTAC, so if you could just bear with me while I run through some of these things. So, Bravard is big. We have a lot of square footage, we have a lot of classrooms, a lot of schools. Facilities is a big deal here. And the big deal is that we are starting to reach the end of our useful life of many of our facilities, many of our buildings. So, this is an issue that is not going away for us. We've done a good job with the SRTAC of trying to mitigate the effects of aging, but the aging continues. So, many of our facilities are in that boat. If you think about how big we are, our 12.8 million square feet or so, that's equivalent to about 5,000 homes. So, that's what we're managing. It sort of puts it in perspective as to the scope of our responsibility. Similarly, in terms of the students that we serve and the families that we serve, we serve more students than the population of every Bravard municipality except Humvee and Melville. So, again, we're on the scale of municipal services, the services that we provide and all of our folks, I think she's been on administrative side, if you put it in that perspective, we have an enormous amount of responsibility, not just in facilities, but in things like transportation, food services, technology, and our core mission of education. So, I think you all are familiar with this, the decline of resources over time, and the perfect storm of the economic downturn, our reduction in maintenance personnel, and equipment reaching the end of its useful life. And that's sort of what got us to the situation where we initiated the 2014 assessment and started talking about the SRTAC last round. One of the things I want to tell all of you is that we are not alone in the state of our facilities. I've looked at this at a national level, state level, local level, even looking at across municipalities and counties and what they do, we are all struggling with not keeping up with the maintenance of our infrastructure. So, as I go through our slides and talk about where we are, we're not by ourselves in this boat, but we are in the boat. What I'm going to talk about the next sort of 12 slides or so is some excerpts of data from two different publications, and I've put on the slides some of the more relevant pieces of data, just so you had those references, but you've also got the documents in their entirety in your agenda package. But a lot of what I'm going to be talking about is sort of stating the obvious, things that I'm sure that you know, that this publication reversing the cycle of deterioration, this is by the Council of Great City Schools, 76 large urban districts collaborate, and this is based on their research, but basically talking about student performance and the relationship between facilities and student performance, very important point. Talking about teachers, you think about our strategic plan, and teacher recruitment, and teacher retention. Facilities matter when you're competing with brand-new schools in other districts, you're competing with brand-new charter schools. Facilities are a part of that competitive package in recruitment and retention of not only teachers, but also our other employees as well. Deferred maintenance, you know, everyone I'm sure has heard the discussion about deferred maintenance and the long-term cost impacts of deferring our maintenance, and the disruption in our learning environment is particularly important as well. So, deferring maintenance has impacts financially, and we all talk about those a lot, but we also have severe impacts in the classroom, when the air conditioning doesn't work, when the intercoms don't work, when the plumbing doesn't work. Whatever system is not working behind the scenes has a huge impact on our learning environment, and when we don't have reliable systems, it is particularly bad, because our principals and our teachers, administrators, our students, everybody's distracted by stuff that should just work. So, it's a big issue in my book. This, I thought, was particularly relevant in that the dollar of preventative maintenance that is deferred will result in $4 in initial costs. And that may be, you know, plus or minus whatever for our local situation here, but it's, it's a point that I think is relevant when we talk about the importance of investing in maintenance.
Where is that from?
That's from that, Great City Schools, yep. So, this is a slide, and this is not Bravard data, this is just a slide, it was in that document, but the, the concept here is that if you do maintenance properly, your cliff goes out in time. If you do maintenance improperly, your cliff goes this way in time. And we've seen, we've seen our cliffs, we've seen instances of this in our own SRTAC program And we've seen, we've seen our cliffs, we've seen instances of this in our own SIR Tax program where we are replacing equipment sooner than we should because we've not done proper maintenance over the last eight to 10 years. So, definitely agree that this is, in fact, factual for our district and everyone else. This starts to get to how much we should be investing. And in this particular reference document, they were talking about 2% to 4% of the current replacement value of our buildings. And I did a quick calculation based on our current assessments and extrapolating that data across our facilities and looking at about 2% of our current replacement value, we should be in about the $55 million a year range. And so, our SIR Tax brings in about $45 million a year, and so that's good. We're doing good work with that money. But it is basically the amount of money we need to do proper level of maintenance. And in fact, it could be argued that we need more depending on the sources that you use. And again, in this particular reference, they were talking about maintenance, and then they said, "And you should be planning for replacement of your facilities." That's a whole nother conversation and a whole nother pile of resources that you need in order to do that properly. So, this came out of that particular reference, and I hope you can see it because they had an example in this reference that is very similar to Bravard, and it's on the right side of the screen. So, in this particular example, there was a district that had over about 11.5 million square feet, 100,000 students. The cost of construction per square foot is about $200. That's about our extrapolated current replacement value per square foot that I just did a quick calculation on. So, it's very analogous, and they're recommending about a $47 million a year investment. And keep in mind, this data is from 2016, which the publication date's 2016, so the data's probably 2014. So, we're starting to get, you know, eight, nine-year-old data, too. So, this is just giving you kind of a perspective on the level of resources that would be appropriate if we were to do this 100% properly. The other resource is State of Our Schools, 2016 National Council on School Facilities, and had a couple of other points, very similar. Students' ability to hear their teacher clearly, substantial impact. We've talked about intercoms a lot from both a security perspective and from a classroom perspective. We need to do a better job there. We really do. We've been doing intercom projects. We need to think about intercom projects. And here's data that supports that that is a good investment of resources in the learning environment. Another point is that not only are students affected, our community is affected as well. Economic development, you talk about incentives for businesses to move to Bravard County, to our cities. A lot of that centers around the state of our schools, and the quality of education is very important. But also, the facilities are important, too. When you're trying to attract a major employer, you drive down the road, you look at the school, you gotta think, is this a school that is cared about by its community when you look at a 50, 60-year-old school? So, very important in the context of community health as well. And this graphic is from that publication, kind of a similar type of percentage, talking about 3% of current replacement value for maintenance and operation, 2% for renewals, 1% for alterations, 1% for reduction of the deferred maintenance that has accumulated. And you add those up, and you're in the 7% range. And we're, right now, at about, you know, 2%, 1.8% or so, if we just kind of extrapolate those numbers. So, you could argue that we really need four times where we are with our SIR Tax just on the basis of some of these broad-brush national-level statistics.
So, you're talking like $200 million per year?
Yeah. Now, I couldn't spend $200 million per year. We're not staffed for that. The $45 million is very good.
So, it's really like $200 million plus, you know, tripling your staff on top of it?
Yeah, like if we were to do this perfectly, then yes. But I think the $45 million we have from the SIR Tax is serving us well.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, it includes replacement as well.
Yeah, this is planning for replacement.
That's a large chunk of money. Not that it is or should be dismissed because we don't have a great replacement plan in place now, but that's why that amount is so high. So, it includes replacement.
So, if you think about, maybe about half that is on the replacement, saving for replacement, half that is on the maintenance and operations side, roughly. So, what are we doing locally?
I have a quick question just about, and it's a finance question. I'm not sure. I mean, I know we don't CFO anymore, so maybe Dr. Holland, you can... If we were to save, I know we, sales tax money we're not gonna sit on, per se, but saving capital funds, how? Is that allowed legally for how many years? Aren't we expected to, you know, you know, from last year that we're expecting to use our funds as quickly as possible to put them into some of our students? So, when you're saving for replacement, which some of these things need to be replaced for 10, 15 years, are we saving money for 10, 15 years in an ideal world where we were fully funded?
No, we're not. We're using educational impact fees for new capacity. We really can't use those to supplant existing capacity, so I really have no plan to replace facilities that are aging.
If we had the funds, though, it's just, it's kind of a hypothesis. It's also a legal question. If we had the funds and we wanted to start saving to do some replacement, you know, is that we could do it without debt?
Yes.
Is that legally allowed? How many years can you carry capital funds forward before they're just...
Joanne, do you know, sorry to put you on the spot there.
I don't think there's a deadline on how long you can save those funds. I don't, I'm not aware of one. Maybe Mr. Gibbs can speak to that, but you can save for it, but there's so many other needs, capital needs.
That's never happened in the history of schools, so no one knows.
At the same time, we do have a very, we have a very small fund balance in our capital budget for, really just for the emergencies. It's $4 million-ish dollars, but, you know, when you think of emergence, potential emergencies Sue would face, that's... So, we do save. We do have a, you know, some money that is available that we don't budget every year in our capital in that event, but...
But that's not growing.
Correct. It's not growing. It's, in fact, it's actually been on a decline because the needs have exceeded the revenue.
If we could save, could we put it somewhere that it could grow?
Yeah, you could invest it. The problem that you have, even though the facility needs are so great, there's so many competing interests, like IT and some other things out at our school, that have competing interests for those funds as well.
No, yeah, no one would let that money sit there. We would have protesters left and right wondering where we were sitting and spending money.
We invest currently, we have investments for our capital projects that are more good than we should out, which would be any good. Do we ever fear that those, has there ever been a downturn in the economy to where those investments, then all of a sudden, are in jeopardy?
No. Safety is our priority, and we have an investment advisor that understands our policy, that safety is our number-one priority.
And we're governed by statute, right?
Yes, we are.
And what percentage we can put in to print?
Oh, I know. I just heard.
I'm not aware of any legal problem with it either. I have seen districts that have, like, they're, if they had a SIR Tax, it was geared only towards schools in a particular area, like Marion County had one at one point. I still, I think they've had like $10 million left over in that account for at least a decade. So, it is sitting there. It's not enough to... They have to use, the way it was set up is it had to be used for a new school in a designated area of the district. Yeah, they don't have, they didn't have the property at that time. They have recently acquired the property through in-and domain action, and they were looking now, turning that eye toward, you know, how do we get funds to replace a school? That's the new question, because it's not enough to fund these schools.
Could you use, kind of, use sales tax money to save for future?
Yes.
I mean, we have to designate it in before it was on the ballot, that a portion of this will be invested and saved for the future.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so just to bring you back down to the local level, I think you're aware we're embarking upon our facility assessment project. We've got, I think it's 17 now done. We have a few more where fieldwork is done. We're waiting on the documents to come in. And we're using that work to get us to some good, sound capital planning practices. So, hopefully, we'll be able to bring you a scope of work for, you know, three, five, 10-year type of needs. We can aggregate the data by roof systems, mechanical systems, electrical systems, those types of things. We can aggregate it by school. We can aggregate it by geographic area. We can aggregate it by time. But it's really gonna give us a good resource to be able to do much better with our capital planning process. Software is live, so, for example, we did a first assessment with Endeavor Elementary. And we intentionally did this, we did the assessment before we did work in the summer, then we did work in the summer, then updated the assessment, worked out beautifully, and the assessment adjusts. And so, the numbers you get can be real-time. We're also working through, you know, any type of other maintenance investments where we're replacing little AC units or things that are in the assessment. We pick those up, and it's real-time data. This is a bit of a cultural evolution for our department, so, you know, we have some stressors in getting this accomplished and getting folks used to doing things a little differently, but I think over time it's going to yield tremendously better results and better data on which to make decisions in the future. So, these are just some pages out of the assessments that, to give you the indication of the type of information that we receive. And it includes things like the current replacement value, the facility condition index, which is a reflection of the type of work that we need to be doing over certain time periods. It is indicated by priority levels, so you can kind of see what's your near term, what's your midterm, what's your long-term needs are. And then, for each school, goes into the needs by system, the needs by time, and gives you kind of a colorful depiction of what you should be worried about. So, it's very easy to read, easy to look at, easy to digest, and used for facility planning. This kind of just tells you what the different priority levels are, so if you happen to be wandering through these assessment reports and for hundreds of pages long, you kind of see what the different priorities mean. And for us, when we are implementing projects, if we received this book today, we would be working on the Priority 1 and 2 projects, like, right now, we would be planning to do those. And we might be thinking about the Priority 3 to 5, too, because it takes us a little while to actually get the inertia going to execute these types of projects. So, we're looking at Priority 1s and 2s very closely, and right after that, Priority 3 projects as we get these reports in. This is just a sample output. I asked Tony Torisi, our project manager, to just aggregate all this for me to kind of show by system what our priority needs are. So, you can see the architectural, and that includes roofs. Electrical is an area where we have invested, but not invested as heavily as we need to. The mechanical systems, interestingly, are better because we have made such a heavy investment through the SIR Tax. So, the data that we're getting so far is consistent with what we might expect to see. And this gets to your...
Sue, can I, I want to go back to that. I just wanna, I want to add a little context, and I think you alluded to it. This represents the 17 school assessments that are 100% complete. There's several that are currently underway as well, but this gives a snapshot of the cumulative effect. As you look at the bottom, you can see that the 10-year needs for those 17 schools accumulates to approximately $28 million.
And these are direct costs, so this doesn't include engineering and all the other things that we mount on top of this. So, I would caution you, I wouldn't use this data for anything. This is only to show you the type of information that we are receiving from our assessments. And then, Zsuzhka, which, this slide really goes to your question, where we are comparing the current replacement value, which is in red, versus the facility needs in blue. And what we would be looking at is for those schools, whereas a red and a blue are close to one another, we might be thinking about replacement versus renewal. And I, there's been a few schools in the past five years where we've had those conversations, but we've had no resources to say, even if it's a good decision to look at replacement, we have no way to do that. So, we've been, you know, executing kind of the money pit process where we just put money into it because we have to have it operational, but we really have no need, or no resources to make good financial decisions.
Impact fees can be used for a replacement?
Not for replacement. You have to add new capacity. So, that's the constraint there. So, again, this is just data for you to see about the type of information you're getting.
So, does it cost as, I'm sorry, does it cost as much to replace a school as, you know, our general rule is about $20 million, $30 million, $40 million, is that the same number to replace a school?
So, I'd have to say, you think in theory less, but if you think about...
If you take it down.
You're gonna have to meet current codes, and you're gonna have to put kids somewhere, and, you know, all those things that are gonna be sort of ancillary costs, my guess is it'd be at about the same. I don't know, maybe you all have some perspective on that, but I don't feel like it's gonna be substantially cheaper. And what we're seeing on these current replacement values that are direct costs only, they're kind of consistent with what you might think it would cost to replace a school. And we're gonna still have to do engineering and all of the temporary facilities. And so, we're starting to look at that a little more closely. This came up recently where, in order to, in order to effectuate a renovation on the interior, we needed to bring something up to code, which is now gonna require, like, spray coating a building, which is like a half a million-dollar investment, and is that really a good investment? But we can't do the renovations we want because it doesn't meet the current code. So, it's a catch-22 scenario, but we actually pay attention to this. And even though we may be forced into making a less than perfect decision, we're actually looking at those types of situations when we make decisions. So, how are we using the work? We have a tiger team in facilities, and as these come in in groups of like three, we get together sort of an intra-departmental team, and we look through what the Priority 1 and 2 needs are. And everybody gets an assignment, so we are actually using the work. And that's really the important point that I want to make for everyone, is that we're using this data, and we're using it every day. And we're making improvements and do work orders. If it's a maintenance item, it's a project item that we can incorporate into some of our sales tax work. We send it over to Dave's shop. The EH&amp;S guys are engaged in things that are like ADA improvements, and our energy guys are looking at our improvements like lighting that are coming out of this report. So, we are actually using this data really closely. We're also sharing with principals. They have access to it. They get kind of an exit interview with the assessment team. And so, they're aware of what the needs are. We are tagging our assets, and we're finding assets that we didn't know we had. So, that's been an interesting experience for us as well. And you've seen our experiments with analytics, kind of trying to figure out, we've got all this massive data, and while the massive data is relatively small, what can we do with it to provide good reporting to the school board and public about our facilities? So, we're figuring that out at the front end versus waiting until we have this massive amount of data. And then, we're keeping the ICOC informed, too. They've been very interested in our facilities, and I want them to know what we're doing. So, they've been interested. Our auditors have been interested, and we keep those folks up to date. One of the neat things that has come out of this whole process is Jim Ross, our maintenance director, has been doing, standing up an experiment in preventative maintenance and putting together a preventative maintenance plan that is very specific, very detailed for Endeavor and Ocean Breeze. Am I correct?
In West Side.
Never in West Side, I'm sorry. And he is actually taking staff resources and putting them onto the preventive maintenance function and seeing how that goes. So, we're taking them away from something else, but we think it's a good investment of staff, and we want to see what it takes. If we were to do preventative maintenance right, what does it take? So, we're doing an experiment to see what it looks like, and you will probably hear more from me on that point. But I want you all to know that we think it's important enough where we have diverted staff resources to preventive maintenance to see what it looks like and what effects it has. Just wanted to kind of remind everybody that there are other capital needs besides just facilities. And we hear a lot of requests for athletics, playgrounds, buses, we have technology, security's a big deal.
Sue, who was the first one you said? I didn't hear.
Athletics. I just want to, no, I don't want you to miss out.
Sure if I heard it right. I just wanted to hear you.
But what I'll talk about a little bit later that isn't on this particular screen, because it's incorporated into our work, is our classrooms are, in some cases, really not optimum for learning. We have some with no walls. We have some that are as old as I am, and we really need to consider that as well as we're talking about investment resources. I wanted you to know that we're looking at playgrounds, and four, definitely, we cannot play, right? But we realized we really didn't have a good set of data on our playgrounds. So, our EH&amp;S guys have been out doing playground assessments, and these are the types of things that we're looking at. We're about 40% complete. We should be done in about another month. These are the condition code ratings, and just wanted to give you some examples. This is at Kokina, and this is what you see out in the field. You know, and I don't have children in school, but I'd be a little, you know, concerned about that if I were a parent when I see something like that.
Sue, can I ask a quick question on playgrounds?
Sure.
Many moons ago, I worked for a Parks and Rec division, and they actually sent me through training. I was required to go out and inspect every playground in the municipality.
Yep.
I want to say it was once a month or once every...
Do it once a year or a year?
We do an annual inspection.
You do do an annual, huh?
Our staff here, we have staff that go to the National Parks Recreation Training Course and have certification for that. There's a standard of care for that, it's not a regulatory requirement. This is more of a risk management decision. We have forms that the custodians fill out, that they do a weekly inspection of the playground. Teachers are instructed through this process to look for and report if there's something broken, not just daily, but between usage. So you know, teachers are pretty conscientious about the safety of students, so they'll report it to the custodian. Custodian will put in a work order, and then maintenance will show up and do a minor repair or whatever's needed. But that's maintenance, this is where capital, you can only do so much for structural components.
Which was kind of my next question, is how often are we going out to do these inspections and determining that we have to actually shut down a playground?
Because we look at it on an annual basis, we will give notice that this is a system that's going to be failing within the next year or two, so we don't want to just sneak up and wrap it up with a fancy red bow and keep everybody off of it, to have grounds come and demolish it, basically take it out of service. So we kind of track those that are kind of on the tooth, if you will, so there is no surprises. Right now, it's a school asset, so it's not like facilities has money to go and do a capital replacement of a playground, it's up to the school and their school community, although you have the sharing funds now that are helping.
It's still taken some of them a couple of years to raise the funds to get the match. Can I have a question about custodians? Do they have the, is there training we can give them to make, like things we're looking at here? I've been told that you sand that down when you start seeing it and repaint it or seal it, that we can extend the life of these things. Can we train our custodians?
So yeah, so we have a gentleman, Patrick Arbel, he's a custodial coordinator, he's been to the Playground Safety Course, and so he has his staff that are the certified custodial trainers that are assigned to schools individually, and they are the professors of the body knowledge, if you will, best practices to maintain, look for these common safety concerns. So there is this transition of knowledge, if you will, within our trade for safety inspection of playgrounds.
So the custodians are getting...
They're getting hands-on training, so that's if custodian is visited by a certified custodial trainer who has some body knowledge, has been trained a trainer kind of a process. Is it a formal, is there a certificate hanging on the wall? Put it down.
Do we ask for custodians? I mean, you say they're inspecting them weekly, I would probably raise one eyebrow and say, I don't know if that's really happening.
They have a logbook, so if they, if they're doing it, they're generating a paper record. And so when we do an annual assessment, we assess whether they have those records. And to what extent are they done with rigor, experience, if you will, and we got any...
So when they see a rusty patch, what happens now? Do they just write it down in a book, and you see that in a year when you can look at it? Or do they call your trainer?
They see a rusty patch, oftentimes the custodian can do their own minor maintenance prep and paint, or they'll put it on to maintenance trades, and maintenance could handle it as a work order.
And how long does it take us to get to something like that?
I don't know.
It seems like that would take, I mean, a really long, low up priority list.
Low priority.
Yeah. I would guess this is not our priority.
If it's something that could fall off and get hurt?
No, I get that. I'm trying to, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, how can we get the schools to own the little patches so that, you know, they're not hit?
I believe there have been instances where a school community, or a PTO, or that sort of thing, have intervened and actually hired, there are companies who come out and do a refurb of the playground, you know, X years into life and extend it, but I have seen or heard that be done as well.
They just have to know, I feel like sometimes school communities will step in, but they have to know, and if the maintenance, if no one tells them, right, mom and dad are sitting there, and then one day they're like, the playground might be better than the situation where playground's getting shut down, and everyone, all the parents are like, I wish we would have known, like dad may have checked on it once a week if he would have known he should have.
That's the purpose of this, and we have another one, and I wanted to show you, but we're trying to compile this information so that we get a sense of where we are with our playgrounds, so we can do exactly what you're talking about, is we have at the moment, if we need the first group, not in Condition Code One, but we have some that are heading there, so these are the schools where we probably should be looking at a better plan for doing maintenance. But again, this takes resources, whether it's Jim Ross's resources or school resources, somebody's got to make that investment to deal with the rust so it doesn't degrade faster. So it's the same problem on a smaller scale. And then something that has just concerned me over the few years that I've been here is this issue of equity. We have schools with a lot of good resources, parent groups, et cetera, they get more playgrounds, they get more maintenance, they get more everything because they have those resources out in the community, other schools do not, and we are not quite ready to talk about equity. We haven't captured that data yet, but I think what's coming out of your report, Jim, will show us how many we have in each school, and then we can start to evaluate the equity side of this situation as well. So athletics, kind of in the same boat, Jim Ross's team did an assessment back in 2018. The big expense that we have not really addressed yet is tracks, that's the big one. And only from a maintenance point of view, that 1.5 or so number, that is resurfacing what's there, restriping, it is not rubberizing, it's not making it wider, it's not doing all the things that we've heard from some of you in the community that they would like to have done. We basically have no budget for this, and we kind of address things that are on their last legs, but that's not the optimal way to do maintenance. You know, we wait until it's on its deathbed and then we do something. It's not the best time to do maintenance. So this is very, that gets neglected, it's an area that has equity concerns all over the place, we have lots of requests out in the community and interest, we have opportunities for partnerships where cities or county, a lot of folks are like, hey, we would like to share a new X. Having the capacity to be able to develop those partnerships and do a better job like that is missing. And then we get a lot of enhancement requests. So we love our track, we want it rubberized, we want our field to be something other than grass, so all of those things come at us regularly, and we really don't have a good framework to handle those. So just a couple of things to summarize, we have some really good things going on. I feel like we are moving in the right direction in terms of having a whole lot better data, analytics, we can give you better information on which to make decisions. And the CERTAX has been great, it has reduced our deferred maintenance backlog, and I want to make sure I emphasize the word reduced, it has not eliminated, it has reduced our deferred maintenance backlog. On the side where we really need some additional work, our backlog is still growing, there's still things we're not doing. Preventative maintenance, we're not doing that well. We want to do it well, we believe we need to do it well, but that's not what we're able to do. New and deferred capital needs, all of you have talked about various capital needs at your schools and in your communities. And then capital planning just to support educational programs, we talked about, you know, our classrooms are maybe not exactly what we need for the type of education we would like to deliver, we want to do CTE programs, we want to do different things with our educational programs, we really do this kind of on an as-needed basis, but we don't have a good plan because we haven't had the resources to support it. So let me talk a little bit about sales tax and just run through that quickly. I'd like to say we have had a lot of successes with our sales tax program, and so I'll talk to you about what those are. Revenue, of course, is coming in much better than had originally been expected, so that's allowing us to do better scopes and more work, so that's a good thing. We are intending to finish all of our schools this summer, and so I am super proud of that. In my career as a government administrator, this has been one of the most successful referendum happens, revenue comes in, revenue's deployed where it was supposed to be in a timely manner, experiences that I have ever seen or been associated with, so I am super proud of that. Our team has done a tremendous job, and it's really been a, we have, sales tax comes in, it goes out to the school. So I appreciate the team's effort in making that happen. Ancillary facilities and some of our closeouts and some of these little add-on projects, we will be working on those probably for the next year, but basic projects in the schools will be done. Our ICOC is working really well. We appreciate the work that they have done on our behalf, and we communicate regularly with them, appreciate that. And then we've had some really good audits, so I'm very proud of the work that we've done with our sales tax. It has done some really good work in our schools.
Sue, if I could pause you, just because if you go back one, with a slide. You know, we heard from our ICOC a few weeks ago, we expressed our appreciation and certainly well-deserved for their support and their ongoing engagement with the entire process. But their level of willing to engage, admittedly hold us accountable as we want them to, is directly correlated to the work and the communication and the follow-up and the competence that they can have, knowing that in fact the work is being done, that it is going where it's supposed to be, it's being validated through audits semi-annually throughout the year, and I want to just again attribute that to Sue, her leadership as the former project manager, and the entire team, that this is not a small machine running, it is a big machine, and the time ahead that has to go into planning to make sure that everything is in place to get done during those short windows of opportunity to not disrupt the educational learning environment, it is no small task, all while meeting a relatively high level of accountability to our public and to our citizens and the dollars that they awarded us to do. So just, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to accentuate the work of the great team and the confidence that we can go out to our community and say, we have done what we said we were going to do. You can be confident that the money, the dollars have gone where they have been prioritized. And although you walk up or drive up or drive past your school and you may not seem new and fancy, there are stronger infrastructure in place, particularly through HVAC as a result of the sales CERTAX, so.
Thanks.
And I'll add, I know specifically of districts that will remain nameless to protect others, that envy the accomplishment and the work that we've done up front with our sales CERTAX, because I know that there are districts who are in a very difficult place right now with the deployment and the implementation of their sales tax for cap program. Sounds like Marion has some extra money.
Yeah, I mean, think about how many times you hear, just the federal government roads, I mean, it's months and months and months, and then they repave it, and then you see them digging it up and repaving it. I think we are taking for granted what you all have accomplished over these last few years, so.
I think you've given Dean Theodore some credit on this, because he got us started, he had the contracts in place for design and construction, so when the CERTAX passed, we were able to really jump on it. So that act alone probably saved us a year. And give him credit for putting us in a really good position to act with the CERTAX.
It takes the whole team from the beginning, planning through every last person that's trying to work to a schedule over the summer on some of these. You know, we are used to putting out fires and people complaining and screaming at us, and we don't have to, we take the time to notice that nobody's screaming and yelling and complaining that we're two years behind, you know, or some horrible thing that most government entities do when they try to undertake something like this, so thank you.
Thanks. And our contractor teams and our engineers, that whole system has to work together to make it happen, so we've just been very fortunate with a really good team, so thank you. Okay, so you all know the history about CERTAX, and the most important point that I want to show you is right here, when we did our assessments in 2014, the needs were assessed at 721 million, the funding for facility renewal was provided at 157 million, we're at 22%. So I think one of the impressions out there in the community is the sales CERTAX fixed our problems. The sales CERTAX did not fix our problems, but it made a nice dent in the 721 million. So this is how we've really been spending our money, these are the categories that were funded, and where we are right now is through, November 30th is this pie chart, but HVAC is 74% of our expenditures and accomplishments. So a lot of what we've invested in is HVAC, that was the, if you look at the program as it was designed, it was right about 74%. So everything that we have done has been very focused on air conditioning, another 11 to 13% is where electrical runs, that's most of the work. So very little that was visible out in the community.
Is that just of the portion for facilities, that's not counting the security and the technology?
That's not counting the rest, this is just facilities, yeah.
So 70, you couldn't say 74% of the sales tax went to HVAC, you could say 74% of the portion that was for facilities.
Yes, correct, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure I'm not repeating information.
You are correct, so I apologize. So yeah, the problem with that is you can't see it. And so, you know, big discussion about, we're going to do a great CERTAX project at your school over the summer, yay, and you come back in August and it's like, wow, it looks exactly the same. So I think security has helped that because that is more visible with our front office renovations and the fencing, but even Russell's, some of his work, it's behind-the-scenes work, so it's very hard to see and very hard to talk about. So what was not funded, these are all the things that were specifically assessed but not included. And I did a little quick calculation today, I pulled out, I think it was Attachment B, where all of these things were listed, and the 751 million was articulated by type of stuff. And if you look at just the pavilions, parking, restrooms, theaters, kind of the top four or five of those, that's like $208 million back in 2014 that was not included, that clearly needs to be done. Flooring renewal is probably one of your most frequent requests. I mean, if you just look down at your feet in my office and most offices around here, we've got flooring that's, you know, pretty old, and in the classroom it doesn't work well. So you know, these are some things that are eligible for a CERTAX investment, they were not part of the 2014 CERTAX, but could be something in a future CERTAX that we could consider. So learning from experience, we have learned a lot over the last five years, and a lot of what we've learned is that the initial sort of framework for the CERTAX, the like-for-like philosophy, basically was not the optimum philosophy for good, sound investments. Unfortunately, our work with the Citizens Oversight Committee, we talked about that, and as we learned, they were okay with us doing better scopes and better work and doing that better investment, so it wasn't just replacing a 1950's air conditioning system with a 1950's air conditioning system. We wanted to do better work, and we've been able to do that. They also allowed us very early on in the program to get away from the component approach and start looking at a systems approach, and also to prioritize our work based on the needs of the assessment at the day that we're standing there, not based on 2014. So I'm sure as you've seen our contracts come to you, it's, here's Attachment F, and we can do work within Attachment F based on the highest priority needs at this particular moment in time. So that has worked out well for us. One of the flaws in the program has been incomplete projects. So we do this work because that's what we have enough money for, but it's this work that is causing the problem when the kids go back to school in August. So that's been an issue for us, and we're trying to do better and assess what might also be a problem and do more complete projects. So that's a bit of a big learning curve for us. And then having those extra resources that really allow us to do better work, that's really been what has saved us, it's allowed us to address things that fail kind of midstream that we're not on the schedule till later, we've been able to do some projects earlier, so that's been really good. But the bottom line is that we are doing work that is basic needs, functional and safe, that's it. So that's been our framework. So I've talked to you previously about thinking differently about facilities, and I thought I'd bring our friend back.
Bring up the goat.
Because we do need to think differently about facilities and what we can do for our students. So linking to the strategic plan, talking about student performance, teacher recruitment and retention, and about equity, we play a big part in those three things, and I think we need to think about them as we are doing our facilities' outdoor planning. Improving our reliability of all of our systems, one of our supervisors in maintenance has been an advocate for, he calls it N plus one chillers, and you've seen on your agendas where we're thinking about adding chillers to particular schools because we have a system that is like right on the edge of performance, and if something goes down, we don't have air conditioning, and we don't have a way to provide air conditioning, so we're looking at those N plus one approaches. And then technology building solutions, Russell and Robin and I have been collaborating on what we can do in things like, you know, intercoms and communications and fire alarms and classroom technology, how those things all work together. And so instead of me buying a system and Russell buying a system and Robin buying a system, we think about what that system looks like, and that's evolving. You may see different staffing needs and different staffing approaches, where some of the things that are now in my shop may migrate to Russell's shop in the future because they're so technology-driven. So a lot of things that we can do to perform better... So a lot of things that we can do to perform better and serve our students better as we start to think about facilities' work. We also want to be cognizant of fiscal responsibility. And this is a big thing with preventative maintenance. And it's why Mr. Ross has been advocating for it. I will stand up here and advocate for it. We think it's important. We also think technology solutions can save money. Sometimes it's a bigger investment upfront, but big payback at the end. LED lighting is probably the best example of that. Where we can invest more in LED lighting, better for our kids, better for our energy consumption, reduces our air conditioning load. We could stand up an LED relamping project across the district, probably would have a really good payback long-term. And then we look at investment decisions that are reducing our maintenance and operational costs. That's kind of part of our normal work with our surtax projects. And as we talked earlier, replacement of aging facilities, we've started to think about that, even though it's not something we can do. It's something that we need to think about. So our future facilities, I think, like I can clearly document our facilities' needs. It's pretty easy for me to do that. Our assessments are evaluating what we have, but they are not really capturing what we want. So questions of things like equity, athletic facilities, some things that you all are hearing out in your community and in schools that folks believe would be a good enhancement to our school facilities, we are not capturing those yet. And then, you know, we've been kind of focused on the basic services. That's where we've been because that's where the hole was. We needed to get our air conditioning working before we started talking about other things. But I think we're in a place now where having a conversation about bigger ideas is a good idea. Not necessarily, you know, go in there tomorrow, but I think we need to start thinking about our facilities and what we want them to be in the future. So we design our resources around that. So that leads to the sales surtax renewal decision. And I think as the board, you will have some decisions about the sales surtax. Yes, no, duration, use of funds. And we've been in the renewal realm for a while and we could stay very solidly in that renewal realm and very comfortably and utilize the resources and we would do good work with those resources. But I think some of the other things that you have been talking to me about over the last several months can also be considered in that context. And talking about new capacity, talking about replacement, talking about new capital assets, talking about things beyond facilities that touch Russell's world and Robin's world. There are other things that we may want to do in the context of the sales surtax renewal. It is a bondable revenue source. I am not recommending that for a variety of reasons, but I think that is something that you need to be aware of as a board when you're making your decisions, that that is a bondable revenue source. So that's kind of the context of the decisions that I think you as a board will need to wrestle with. Primarily the use of funds and how you want to allocate potential revenues from the sales surtax should you want to go down on. This is an excerpt directly from the statute. You have statutes in your package, but this tells you the things you can spend sales surtax on. It's simply a point of reference. The process is that the board would adopt the authorizing resolution. I provided the prior resolution for you in your package just so you can see what's in it. You just decide on duration and rate and any other terms that you would like in there. The Citizens Oversight Committee, as I said, has been a really good part of the process and I believe strongly that if you want to continue the surtax, it should be part of the renewal. If you choose to change the duration and rate of the sales surtax, there is a new requirement in state law that requires a state audit that is done by APAGA. And in that case, we need to make a decision earlier. So we need to decide by April at the latest in order to give them the six-month notice that is required if you choose to do that. Needs to be done during our elections, so 2020 is the choice on that. And then you can spend it on fixed capital outlay. That's kind of the process that we need to go through to effectively renew our sales tax.
Can I just add something? Because I saw this yesterday in the legislative update, that there's a possibility in Senate Bill 62 that a sales tax will have to be shared with charter schools. I don't know when that would be effective. But that's, did you see that? Just something to keep on our radar proportionally.
Thank you. I've not seen that yet. Thanks.
Specifically to surtax because there is a provision for millage as well.
That one was sales tax.
Okay. And then, so can you have somebody work on what? About what? For some points that we would like to hear.
I have a question. Ms. Butler?
I haven't asked her now in 40 minutes, but.
Do I have permission to speak?
Yes.
When, and this is probably for maybe over there in finance, what, do you know what your debt payment is paid off? So like 2040, it's 2037?
No, we have a couple.
37 comes to my mind for some reason.
2037. That does sound, that does sound right. Because that puts 40 million back into our capital in 2037.
Can you ask for a 17-year? No, I'm just kidding. No, but.
I think, isn't it limited to 10? Isn't 10 the max?
Who knows?
I don't believe there is. There is.
Sales tax, I mean, I saw.
There's a word, but I don't know what it is.
Really, 6, 8, or 10?
Yeah, you can't know. There is, there's some.
I kind of feel like I had a really long one.
I think it's 6, 10, 15.
You said what? 15?
What'd you say?
I have to look at it to tell you for sure.
Sue, I wanted to say something.
Voters have.
What really burns.
No.
What really burns me up inside sometimes is what I hear in that this is a sales tax for facilities, this is a sales tax for, not for our kids, that, you know, there's that dividing line, right? And one of the things that really bothers me is that not many people understand and appreciate your team and their dedication to the same thing that the teachers are. A lot of times, we just think that these are guys that are just normal maintenance guys, whether that's the county or not. But if you truly get to know these guys inside their hearts, they're actually doing it because they believe in the student achievement too. And that never really comes out. So when, and it's even in our contractors. When you go to some of the contractors and you sit with them inside the construction sites, they'll tell you that my kid goes to this school, I am on this PTO. I mean, it's a team effort. So when we go into this process of talking numbers and talking about, you know, achievement for the teachers and everything else, we forget that family, that aspect and that impact that it has on our overall learning environment when we are a community moving forward. And I did want to talk to you guys about, on the Economic Development Council, when we were doing some rezones for our schools about a year and a half ago, two years ago, I contacted some of our local primes like North River Roman and those guys and their HR departments to talk about. Because one of the issues that we have now on the Economic Development Council is, is that we can't attract companies to this location unless our school district, along with our workforce, are number one. So they're no longer looking for tax incentives. That is no longer part of the site developers. They are only looking for the school districts and for the actual labor force. And the reason they look to the school districts is something that happened to Boeing, was that they opened up a plant in, they took over a plant that was over in Louisiana. And when they move a whole operation, they have to have the incentives for those workers in that old operation to move to the new one. And they cannot be successful. That entire operation had dissolved and fell apart within 18 months because people didn't want to move there because their school system was not good. So when a lot of the people that sit around here and enjoy a lot of the amenities that are brought to us by these corporations and everybody that are coming in and building out our new areas like Vieira and Palm Bay and Melbourne, those are all directly attributed to our school system. And for them to ever make an argument that this sales tax does not tie back to jobs, to the community, to improvement of our overall county here is preposterous. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you did and kind of tie all that together. And thank you for you guys' dedication. I know you guys just look like sometimes the maintenance guys, but we know that we love you. And you guys are, well, you have that building out there. You guys have, well, you guys have that building out there and, you know, if you go out there and you visit with them, they're just as dedicated as anybody else to our cause and we really appreciate that.
We do, special folks. So thank you.
Can we talk about this? Wait, hang on, before we get down off this, can I ask one more question about like the future moving forward? One of the things that I am wondering is, you know, you've shared in the presentation that the ICOC has been helpful in allowing the team to do, to have some flexibility with Attachment F. But is there a way, we need the accountability of something like that, here this is what we said we're going to do it. But I just would love to see if we move forward this, with this, again, to have the flexibility as needs change, you know, so that we're not stuck with the way things were assessed in 2014 and now we're in 2020, having to do just only those things. So that your live data on your maintenance software can be used. Is there a way to kind of ride it so that we've got some more flexibility? Or do we need to, or is ICOC doing that for us?
So I think the answer for both of those is like, yes. You know, we've got a great learning experience through this, this sales surtax. And so I think we can design the program to be specific enough where it's clear what we're doing, but also have flexibility to address the needs as they exist at the time we're doing the project and still have that level of oversight with the ICOC or an ICOC. Having that level of oversight and having a group to bounce some of these ideas off of has been really good. And, you know, occasionally we bounce an idea off of them and they don't like it. And so it's, it's been good to have that citizens oversight. So I believe that after hearing from our board members as to some of the things we would like to see in a potential sales surtax renewal, that I would be able to design something that is both specific and flexible.
And you got to, and you always have to be careful because if you make it too open, then you end up in a school district where people are starting to purchase stuff that becomes suspect. And I tried so hard and failed miserably to try to expand the current sales tax to include more cameras when we first got on the board. And it was rightfully so to keep it the skill of the project so that we could continue to get successful audits, so.
So.
Can we talk about this yet?
I'm not fully prepared to talk about that, but it depends on your question.
Is it from Matt Beatzer?
Yes. I think we've got two more slides and then transition to that.
I thought we were on the questions.
Clearly, these are just wrap-up slides.
Clearly, we thought you were on the questions.
So just to wrap up, I always like to use this as a wrap-up slide because I want to make sure that we remain connected to the educational mission and how our students are rated. So, you know, I'm trying to keep us in the, you know, B minus kind of realm because we want to continue to move and make progress. And I feel like we have made progress. Our team has been very dedicated to thinking differently and doing things better and being tied to our educational mission within the realm of fiscal responsibility. So we always keep this in mind. And.
It's right on the.
There it is. Okay. So that's just kind of my thought for the day in terms of, for me. You know, we've come a long way since 2014 referendum, but I think we have more of a journey to go. And so I think we're in a great place to continue to make progress and proud of where we are and proud of where we're going and proud of our team and what we do. And I would be remiss if I didn't also say that the support we receive from the finance folks and the purchasing folks and the leading learning folks and Russell's folks and Robin's folks, and we, we work everybody on this surtax plan. And it's really great to have such an awesome team of us. Thank you all.
Yay!
Now I am.
She said personal, right? She said personally. I heard her say that that meant that she's not leaving any time.
Right.
I think that's what I heard her say.
As long as, if it continues.
Long-term commitment.
I say those prayers every night.
I'm trying to age gracefully as well.
I'm working on a PM, Permanente Maintenance, to extend life.
That's my bike riding, yeah.
I was just going to say, get her bike. I'm going to record all of it over for you on the PM.
Can I talk about this yet?
Not fine here to talk about it, though.
Oh, yeah, he dropped it and ran. But I can talk without him. So this came, this, do you have anything to do with this?
I provide data for that.
Who brought this?
We work together.
Where is he? He literally.
Yeah, I can help.
I texted him, trying to ask him to come back, but I can take notes.
Okay. Well, I, amazing, perfect, wonderful, great job. A concern of mine from my very first day on the board was our ability, if it came time to need it again, to get community support. And here we are, just a few months out, considering it. And this sheet is fabulous. But this sheet is what we needed like six months into it. And in my opinion, our promotion throughout the community should have been, and this is Paul from Matt Beatzer.
Hey, there's Nikki.
Oh, there's Nikki. I was looking for somebody from New York Harbor. Sorry. This is amazing.
They're all around.
Okay. What I was saying is this is amazing, but this is what we needed four years ago. And I'm just, I'm concerned that we haven't done our due diligence over the last.
This is what has been done.
No, this, this, this didn't start until about a year ago. This may have been less, like, this should have been day one, you know, like what was happening, this kind of stuff should have happened from day one. And then from there, we should have had, and I, I'm not, I don't want to criticize brutally, so I'm trying to be kind, but this is all, this is our bubble. Like this reach that we're seeing, to me, is, is our people that already know and see and feel in love. There's 500,000 more people in our community that we have to get on board if this is something that we are, and again, this isn't really directed to you, it's probably more over there and beyond. We're going to have to, I mean, if you guys remember what the board and the superintendent had to do to get this one approved, were you, were you here then? I mean, the work within the community has shown us, yes, we already have it, so if we needed to get it, like the impetus here, but they were out hitting the pavement, speaking everywhere I went, there they were. There were people on street corners with signs or, but our voters don't easily click yes for any kind of tax. So the work that has to be done is just, I have concerns. So I don't want to end on a negative note because you guys have done an amazing job.
As, as I've been invited out to speak on the surtax and what we've been doing, I take all of those opportunities and there's pieces of this presentation that are in that presentation where I talk about how big the district is and I talk about what we've done well and what we haven't done well. So I want to be transparent about how we've been performing with our surtax because people experience different things in the schools. And I feel like.
It's, we have to be more proactive. Like, you're like, when I'm invited, like, we need to be.
That's where I'm at right now.
All of us. And unfortunately, sometimes it's, it's something that wasn't a part of the sales surtax is broken or not working. And, oh, why did they use our sales tax dollars and this is still broken? Well, that wasn't on the list. I mean, I hate telling that people, well, that wasn't on the list, but.
You probably have the best example of that problem.
Yeah, in the middle lane.
But yes, I agree. And I'm sure we'll be working with Matt's department to figure out how we can do better and get out in the community.
If we get there, I don't, I mean, I don't know what our, you said April is when you need to know from us.
If we are going to make any changes, so the timing on that decision will be up to you and Dr. Mullins as to how we bring that decision to a place where it's made. Meanwhile, we're out in the community talking about it.
You said we have to have an audit, is that, what's?
Only if we change the terms of the surtax.
What's audited? Like what we've done so far?
What we've done.
Oh.
The state comes in and audits what we've done.
Okay. Well, we should.
And I think, don't they also, in the audit, aren't they auditing us to justify that we actually need the sales tax?
I don't.
Because.
I do, but I could be wrong about.
But we'll have that ready for them too. I mean, if we need that, we've done all, you know, we've got the IC, we've got the audits and we have the new attachment apps. Is that what we're getting?
Not necessarily.
Facility assessment.
Yeah. New attachment app.
I'm going to give them a stack of 300-page books and say, here you go.
Yeah. Is each booklet, is each school assessment literally 300 pages?
Wow, that's so awesome. Like, it was pretty, I mean, I'm not going to lie, I was pretty excited in the beginning of when you were going over what the software is able to do and track and how we haven't been, to think that all this has just been out there.
It's pretty cool. It's pretty cool. If you'd like, I was going, I should have brought some books. I'm happy to share them with you, and I can send you an example assessment if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you send us one of our schools, one of our own schools?
Yes.
I can testify to some things already being done, because when I pulled into first day back last week to drop my son off at West Melbourne School for Science, we had, instead of a pothole-filled car loop, we had a nice.
What about, yeah, in the Atlantic, I pulled up yesterday, I was like, holy smokes, it's been paved and lined. It looks so good, but was that on the, was somebody's radar to do?
You just randomly go.
We're just stepping on what we noticed.
I mean, was that, what was that part of? Why did that get done? We've wanted that for so long there, and there it was.
Just priority, and it finally came up, that's it.
Well, it looks, it really makes the front of the school look so much better.
So, to that point, I love that you want to dig into the assessments, because that's my next task. And that is, this, all of that, there's far too much information and data and, you know, still some of the questions that Sue has already posed about athletics, about playgrounds, and that sort of thing. And assessments will be finished up here in the near future. I'd like to ask board members to reach out to Sue in pretty short order and have a one-on-one and dig into the information, dig into the questions, dig into, you know, provide feedback that you're hearing from the district. And then, I'm always in constant one-on-one, and I will be in communication with Sue, because I won't be able to be in all of those conversations, and then come back around and be preparing to bring a next recommendation to the board about related to sales surtax, likely well before April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And look, it's my important pocket.
Good job, team.
Thank you.
That has to do with our self-restraint and asking questions.
Why do they have any restraint?
She stuck to her 45-minute comments.
Awesome.
I can't believe what that's, it's been seven, 12 years. All of her coming out, that that, like, that nigga was so mad.
Oh, yes, sorry. Seeing no further issues, workshop is done.